Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Update on COVID-19 pandemic, Chief? For those of you who are going to speak this evening, we do have some handy wipes up there. If you want to wipe the mic after each speaker, we'll leave that up to you. Thank you. Is your mic on? While we're waiting, just to share with you, Councilman Tom Musselman is present in an adjoining room, and he's able to hear and see everything we have. Yeah, let's do a roll call. Daniel?
Mayor Kine?
Here.
Councilmember Musselman?
Present.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Lukinbach?
Here.
And Councilmember Rickert?
Here.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. We'd like to go over the COVID numbers that were reported. This report is from yesterday. Checked this afternoon, and the report for today hadn't come in when I made this report. So as of 2/28/2021, cases reported in Texas are at 2,287,135. Number of probable cases, and I'm just reporting what I get off the state dishes website, are at 256,889. Newly daily case count was at 2,921 with 715 probable cases in the state of Texas. Newly reported fatalities was at 197, with estimated recoveries in Texas at 2,422,369, leaving about 160,268 active cases. And if you recall, a few weeks ago, that case, the active case count was close at 300,000 and some change. We look at our hospitalizations, our hospitalizations are down as well. I'm not saying we're out of the pandemic by any means, but I will tell you, the numbers are starting to decrease. And we did face that back in July of last year, and then when we got to the holiday season, it seemed that we had an increase in the cases with all the get togethers that were going on. So the daily average patients in the state of Texas, Texas over the last seven days is about 6,464, and that's, that number is also down, which helps out our healthcare system across the state. When we look at the average cases for the, for the state, they're running around 3,000 cases reported daily. That, that number has also dropped. And when we look specifically at Gillespie County, we're averaging two to three cases a day. And currently, we have 39 active cases in Gillespie County. The, in Kerr County, they have 64 active cases, Kendall County 59, Mason County 21, Lano County 171, and Blanco County 75. So you, you can see those numbers are, actually, last week at this time, our active case numbers were at 18, so we are on a little bit of an increase there. When we look at vaccinations, the vaccinations that are being received across the state, doses allocated to the state of Texas are at 7,109,875. Doses shipped, 6,914,705. People vaccinated with one dose are at 3,493,411, with people, people who are fully vaccinated are 1,803,840. Doses, total doses administered in the state are at 5,297,251. Then if we look specifically in Gillespie County, people vaccinated with one dose is at 4,373, people fully vaccinated is at 2,272, and those numbers are pretty even with Kerr and Kendall County, Blanco, Lano, and Mason, or those numbers are a little lower. We will be testing on March 15th through the 19th, from 8:00 to 5:00 PM at the Pioneer Pavilion. Fortunately, we were able to get some damage done that occurred there at the Pioneer Pavilion, and it's, it's ready to be used again for our testing, which keeps it real consistent for us. The vaccination dates, last week, I believe, last week vaccinations were mostly centered around the second dose for people who had already received their first dose. I believe tomorrow, they will start vaccinations again for the first dose and the second dose. So, and all of that scheduled through HCM, so that pretty much concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mayor and Council, if I could add one additional item, because I know a lot of people are tuned in to the council meeting tonight, and we have a lot of people in the audience this evening. Hill Country Memorial is in critical need for additional volunteers at the vaccination site. A lot of our employees have volunteered over the last couple of weeks, and a lot of them will be volunteering this week, but they need some more help, so please, for those of you that are tuned in this evening, or those of you in the audience, if you have four hours, it's four hour shifts, please contact the hospital and volunteer. The vaccinations will continue for at least the next couple of months, and they're needing people to sign in, register people, they need people to work parking, they need vaccinators, they need still quite a bit of help in order to handle the increasing number of vaccinations that they're doing. So please volunteer when you get, if you have four hours to spare.
Thank you. Any questions, Paulie?
So Chief, on the, we're tied to the San Antonio region, right?
Right.
For hospitalization, so what's going on with them? They had really high counts of COVID hospitalizations. Have they come back down, and are they now open back up yet?
I apologize, I do not have that information tonight, but I'll certainly get that and get it to you. You would seem to think that they are, but I don't really know. The problem, well, one of the issues is, our region is also goes all the way into South Texas, into the Rio Grande Valley and things like that, so they've had some really larger, you know, cases in that area, but I will certainly check.
Okay, just because what happens there impacts our hospital.
Right, that's right, yeah.
It all backs up on us, so it's important to keep track of them, too.
Right, understand.
So how many have had the vaccine here in Gillespie County?
You're challenging my memory here.
Well?
So, 4,373 have been vaccinated one time, and 2,272 have been vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
So around 6,000 then?
Right.
Thank you. Paulie? Tom?
Chief, how many, what's the, what's the current positivity rate in Gillespie County?
Well, we have not tested recently with the big, or the community tests that we do. My understanding is, I think, the positivity rate at the hospital is around 14%, and I believe it was maybe 11%, oh, I guess a week ago or so. So you can see that that's increased a little bit at the hospital. We do not have numbers, recent numbers for our community test.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. No questions for me. Okay, employee recognitions?
Mayor and Council, first off, this evening, we'd like to recognize the employees that helped set up the meeting this evening, from our, of course, Eric Whiting, our new IT director, his staff, we had Development Services that helped set up, but we'd also like to recognize KK Welch and her sister for allowing us to use this facility. Again, we were searching over the last couple of weeks for a facility that would be large enough and would have the technical ability to handle our meetings, and KK Welch and her company here have been very accommodating, so we want to recognize them this evening. We also want to continue to recognize the employees and volunteers and businesses who responded during the recent disaster. Again, we won't name them tonight, because we could go on for hours, to recognize everybody that cooperated and helped support the city and the county as we responded to this real difficult emergency a couple of weeks ago. We continue to get a lot of letters and emails of appreciation from the community, a lot of accolades that are coming through emails and letters. Mayor and Council, in fact, just a few minutes ago, I got a email from Jerry Don Smith on Winding Way, it says, "Mr. Myers, good afternoon. Just wanted to say thank you to so many of your city staff, Clinton Bailey and his department, Planning and Development, Jason Lutz, Shelby Collier, and all the other heads, Public Utility, Sanitation, everyone has so stepped up for the city during a terrible challenge. I cannot say enough for our city services. Please let them know," respectively Jerry Don Smith. And I get, I've gotten a lot of these over the last couple of weeks, and it's just really kind of heartwarming to know that there's so much community support and appreciation for everything that's happened, even though, even though we went through some difficult times, we're getting a lot of recognition and appreciation from the citizens out there, so wanted to acknowledge that and thank them for those, that kind of feedback, so that's all I have, man.
Thank you. Good comments. First of all, one thing I did fail to mention, I want to welcome all of you all for coming this evening, and it's always good to see, even though I can't see very well with the lights, but thank you all for coming. We're going to go into public comment, but I would like to read this first. "Under the Texas Open Meeting Act, each person making a public comment has a right to publicly voice concerns or criticism of the city council, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. However, that right does not extend to public criticism that is otherwise prohibited by law. To assure that all members in the public can be heard in a fair, impartial, respectful manner, any public comment that includes defamation, intimidation, personal affords, profanity, or threats of violence is prohibited." So I would appreciate y'all's comments, and we have 25 speakers tonight. Three-minute limit, the clock is here to your, to your right as you come to the speaker. Eric will give you a one-minute warning. I'm going to go in order that we, I have received these. We did get one written comment, and I have one as well. So we'll start off, the first speaker will be Tom Marshall. I would prefer you come to the speaker, sir, because I am a bit hard of hearing. Again, I think, yeah, it may be better for the streaming as well. Thank you, Tom, appreciate it.
I guess it was too much to expect some leadership out of our city council, another two months of illegal mask mandate. But you can reverse that decision, and here are three reasons why you should. First, are you aware of OSHA Statute 1019.134 that requires an employer to medically evaluate any employee required to wear a mask and establish a program to monitor their medical progress? Have you followed this law for city employees? Second, in December 2019, my wife was diagnosed with flu strain B. The doctor at our local hospital suggested that she and I wear a mask for a few days until the fever was gone. That is how it should be, a doctor suggesting and prescribing medical treatment after a medical examination. You cannot legally do the same thing. You are practicing medicine without a license, and no executive order by any level of government gives you a medical license. Third, your actions of not following our laws and constitutions shows a disregard for the oaths you have sworn. If you do not know those laws, I suggest you learn them. Are you willing to accept the responsibility for practicing medicine without a license? Time for some responsible leadership. You are here to serve all the people of this community, not service them. And since practicing medicine without a license is acceptable now, I'm going to do just that. I diagnosed this city with a disease that is far more serious, more deadly, and more widespread than COVID ever could be. In a city with a population of 11,000 people and less than 4,000 determine the leadership of this city, we have a disease called voter apathy. Why don't you mandate that everyone vote? Maybe we can cure this disease. And then if people don't vote, we can call the city hotline and tell, tell on them for not voting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Marshall? Is the speaker on? I know you were very, I could hear you very well, but I didn't know, could the audience hear that through the speaker system? Okay, okay. And after Mary Marshall, the next speaker would be Robert Phoenix.
I guess it has to be down, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. My statement today is to the voters, not to the city government, because the city government will not listen to this. Their hearts and ears are closed. The voters know this, and that's why they don't vote. The idea that government will protect our health is laughable. I learned how heartless government is in 2008, but that's another story. Governments are run by bureaucrats, and their first interest is their own paycheck. There, there are statesmen in office, but they don't control anything. So when the government says, "Do this because we know what's best for you," that translates to "Do this because we need to justify our paycheck." The more control the government has, the less money we have. The bureaucrats they hire will have a staff and cut transportation costs and insurance costs, which we will pay. Emergency management position they want to create to manage an emergency that we don't have will further shred our rights, and they will pat themselves on the back for doing such a good job of managing an emergency that we never had, and then insist that they need more money to do a better job of managing an emergency that we don't have, and controlling the voters who are paying their paychecks. This is a permanent position, folks. This will not go away, whether COVID goes away or not. There will be another emergency for them to manage, and this office will grow into a behemoth. This is the insanity of bureaucracies, because employees get to tell the boss where to go, what to do, and when to do it. The reason I wrote this statement comes from an email my brother sent to me. In it, it was a quote that goes like this, "The Constitution is not an instrument for the government to restrain the people. It is an instrument for the people to restrain the government lest it come to dominate our lives and interests."
Thank you, Mayor. Robert Phoenix? And after Robert would be Walt. I'm sorry, I'm not able to read your last name, Remler, maybe? I might be close. Walt, you'll be after Robert.
Well, thank you for, thank you for having the meeting here tonight. It's a little...
Yeah.
Thank you for having the meeting here tonight, and listening to these people out here who wanted this to happen, and also to be able to stream it live, which I think is really, really important, for people to be able to witness this both in real time and virtual time. I'm not going to be a hammer to your nail tonight, at least not that much, because you're probably going to get a lot of that from the people out there. But what I do want to talk about is, I want to move the timeline ahead a little bit forward, that Greg Abbott has now said he's going to unleash 1,100 National Guard to vaccinate our elderly door-to-door, and that's a little concerning, if you ask me. And I think it's a trend of what's about to come, and I think we're going to come to a point where we're going to have a crossroads here, where there are going to be demands, they're going to be put on city government to do things that the people in this room and in this town will not agree with. They're just not going to agree with it. So we're going to have to wrap our heads around that. What are you going to do when that moment comes? Are you going to force a vaccine mandate on the people of Fredericksburg? How's that going to go over? And are you prepared for that kind of resistance? Now, before I see the mic, what I wanted to do is, excuse me, is just talk about the mRNA vaccine. If you go onto the Moderna website, in fact, I have it right here. It tells you exactly what it is. It says, it says that this mRNA vaccine is a software. It's not a vaccine. They are using the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer vaccine so that theoretically, it can create an immune response for not just COVID-19, but for any other supposed virus or malady. You have to understand what we're up against here. This is not your typical MM, this is not your measles, mumps, rubella vaccine. So we've just got to move the timeline ahead forward, and we're going to have to figure out where the line in the sand is, because I think there's going to be a lot of resistance in terms of people with their personal rights around the vaccine and being able to fully enter into our society here in Fredericksburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Walt? And again, I apologize, I can't pronounce your last name. Yeah, please do when you get to the mic. And then after that is Bruce Tate.
Members of Council Mayor Walt Remley. The first randomized, the first randomized controlled trial evaluating, evaluating the effectiveness of surgical face masks against SARS-CoV-2 was published in November, not very long ago, in the Annals of Internal Medicine, if you can look it up. During the trial, researchers evaluated more than 6,000 individuals and found that masks did not statistically significantly reduce the incidence of infection of COVID-19. In the group that reportedly wore their masks exactly, as y'all are doing, maybe, as instructed, 2% tested to be positive for the virus as compared to 2.1% of the folks that didn't wear masks. That is statistically insignificant. Despite a lack of evidence that mask-wearing in the general public was ineffective, widespread mask mandates were rolled out. Y'all are part of that. At the end of December 2020, researchers, researchers from Rational Ground revealed results of data analysis evaluating the use of masks in all 50 U.S. states. They evaluated from 1 May 2020 through December 15th, 2020, and calculated how many cases per day occurred by population with and without mask mandates. The states with no mask mandates reported 17 cases per 100,000 people per day. Mask-mandated states reported 27 cases per 100,000 people today, per day. That's an increase of 59%. Tell me, tell me that masks work. In other words, the evidence does not support the use of masks in school lockdowns, and there's a powerful evidence that masks in school lockdowns are causing significant damage to the physical and psychological health of people and children. Yet these mandates and lockdowns have garnered support from schools, city councils, the governor, likely driven by fear of the virus. Masks have shown to be ineffective, yet the public fails, falls into line with an unscientific mandate. The wearing of a mask leads them to believe they are safe, which is delusion. They are not safe, especially when considering the health hazards associated with concentrating and rebreathing the waste we generate. God did not design us to rebreathe our own waste. The only thing nationwide mask mandates have accomplished is to create a national delusional psychosis.
Mr. Tate, and then Matt Long will be next. Bruce Tate, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that I'm not redundant with what everybody else is saying, I want to say that I've been in the nutrition and health business for over 40 years. I have two commercial businesses here in Fredericksburg, and one is manufacturing of nutritional and health supplements, and the other one is distribution. So I'm not just, I'm also a research chemist and formulator, so I'm not just speaking out of reading somebody else's information, I interpret this information, I know it, I do it, it's a part of my life and has been for over 40 years. So in me saying this, it's just not speaking other people's words. But to go on with OSHA, OSHA says right here, in a form, a format that OSHA put out, was surgical masks are not designed or certified to prevent the inhalation of small airborne contaminants. These particles are not visible to the naked eye and may still be capable of causing infection. Going on and on through it, they said, this is not what it is. Jane Pauley just had CBS Sunday morning, if you saw it Sunday, they had the 3M scientists on there, and they said, there's only one mask that works with COVID. It's the N95 with the respirator. So unless you're going to mandate everyone to have that mask, which is only available to medical personnel, then it's absolutely useless. All it's doing is causing problems, it's not preventing any problems. So you can look at that CBS documentary where they said there is no scientific evidence that any of these masks that people are using will do anything. This is the next one from the New England Journal of Medicine, and I can give you this. "Masks are symbolic," says Dr. Fauci in the New England Journal of Medicine. "In the past week, Dr. Anthony Fauci and the New England Journal of Medicine have admitted that masks are little more than symbols, virtual signaling. For those of you who shout 'science,' it's nothing but a Tourette syndrome." "The Surgeon General was widely mocked and ridiculed, but suggesting in March that the mask might have, might even increase the spread of the virus. Yet here, the esteemed New England Journal of Medicine provides the same warning to the mask wearers. Thus, the argument is over. Anyone who advocates universal masking is merely engaging in the virtual signaling and not public health." Just what the other gentleman said about the mRNA, this is modifying our DNA. I am not going to be one, I don't care that I'm 68 years old, I'm not going to have my DNA modified before I die, or allow it to kill me. So there's going to be a lot of people that y'all are going to have to round up and throw into prison, because we're not going to do it. We know what this is leading to. Read your Bible and Revelation.
Thank you. Matt Long, and then Rosanna South School, you're up after Mr. Long.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I was announcing who was going to come up after you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're ready to roll.
All right. My name's Matt Long, and I want to thank you first of all for, uh, deciding to meet in person again. Thank you very much, very sincerely. This makes a big difference. During the last city council meeting, it was pointed out that the city attorney had made reference to the Uni, U.S. Constitution. In reply to the offer of Bridge Church to allow city council to meet in their facility, your attorney called upon the separation clause in the Constitution. So, since the U.S. Constitution has been brought into this discussion, I would like to bring up another piece of this very same document. It's not in another chapter of the Constitution, and it's not in another article of the Constitution. It's not even on a different page of the Constitution. In fact, it's not even in another paragraph. In the very same sentence that your attorney pulled out the separation clause, the very same sentence are the following words, "The right of the people peaceably to assemble." This clause, let's call it the Assembly Clause, has been ignored since day one of this so-called emergency. The city council has chosen to ignore this part of the Constitution, as has the governor of the state of Texas. I find it deeply disturbing to point out one part of the Constitution and completely ignore another part of the Constitution that is in the very same sentence. One final word, nowhere in the U.S. Constitution or the Texas Constitution does it say, "None of this counts if a bunch of people get sick." Doesn't say that anywhere. It is time to defend the Constitution as you swore to do when you took this office. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rosanna Sasco, and then Kimberly Lambes is after.
Good evening. My name is Rosanna Sasco. I have nothing to say to them. I'm only here to speak to you.
Rosanna, would you speak to the council, please?
I don't have anything to say to you. You can listen to what I have to say to the people here that elect you. You work for us. This is a public comment, and you're here to listen. And you're taking up my time, sir. So, I'm going to go ahead and ignore your comment. Thank you very much. You're not allowed to wear red today if I'm not allowed to speak. Thank you. So, hey, I want my time back on the clock, by the way. Restart the time. Okay?
Reset it.
I wrote a bunch of things to tell y'all, but you know what? I'm not going to use that. I'm going to say exactly what God sent me here to tell you today. Every one of you were sent here at this time on earth. That includes them, but they're not listening because they don't care what you have to say. Obviously, through their actions, they don't. So, I'm here to tell all of y'all, this ends now. And the best way you can end it is to take your power back. It's peaceful, it's not violent. Take the mask off. That's what I was sent here to tell you. It ends right now. Take the mask off. All of these mandates, they're unconstitutional, they're trampling on your rights. Are you just going to let it happen? Masks are child abuse. Take them off your children. They don't have a right to put your children in boxes, or little cages, or little bubble things, like I've seen on the internet, to play their little instruments. If I had children in school right now, thank God my youngest graduated last year, he wouldn't be participating in any of it. And he knows that. We don't wear masks at our ranch, we don't wear masks at our house. In fact, they're not allowed. That's what you can do. You can just take a stand. It's up to you. You have the power. You elect them. They don't run your life. You don't have to bow down. Are you going to get on your knees or are you going to get up? The title of the speech I wrote, I think we're all adults here, aren't we? I'm not sure about some of us, but we're all adults. Title of the thing I wrote was called, "Are You Going to Be a Patriot or a Pussy?" And I stand by that. What are you going to be? Tonight is the night. Choose. Rip the signs off your windows if you're a business owner that say a mask is required. No, it's not. Why? Because Charlie Kenny said so? Charlie, you're a nice guy. I've talked to you a lot on the phone, actually. Now you can put a face to who you talk to. But, uh, nice only goes so far. You have to stand up, and you have to stand up for the people that elected you. This is fake. Where are the flu numbers? Where did heart disease go this year? Where did cancer go? The little cloth on your face? It's called cotton. It's not magic. The Egyptians have been growing it for thousands of years, and guess what it doesn't do? It doesn't prevent the spread of coronavirus. Neither does the little paper one on his face that's not listening over there. It's counting numbers on a sheet of paper. Says on the box that came out of, doesn't prevent the spread of coronavirus, by the way. Employees, if your employer is requiring you to wear a mask to work, did you know that you can personally sue them? That's right. Contact your attorney. You can do it. It's time we stand up before they keep trampling our rights, y'all. It's now or never. I came here just to tell you that. I don't even live in the city, and I came here to encourage every one of you. If you're scared, last thing I have to say, God promised you. Isaiah 54:17. "No weapon formed against you shall prosper."
Thank you, Kimberly Lambes. Next speaker after that is Brett Darby.
Hi, guys. Nice to see you in person again. I really don't understand why you continue to perpetuate this narrative that masks are a good thing. I will not comply. I haven't been complying, and I will continue to not comply, and I will continue to educate others around me that they also don't need to comply if they don't want to. It's their health. You don't have the authority to govern my health. By trying to maintain this mandate, you are only instilling further distrust in this community. You are actively participating in socially conditioning children to be submissive and disconnect your own children, your own grandchildren. This is the world you are all helping to create and enforce for them. You're telling them that they should fear others, they should stay away from their own grandparents. Everywhere they go, everything they watch now, they see a mask over everyone's face. Is this really the future you want for your own community, for your own family? I continue to be extremely worried regarding the city and the county's assessment that things cannot return to normal until the majority of the population, both here and the surrounding counties, are vaccinated. First of all, the federal government does not have a plan for things to go back to normal. That's not their plan. They want you to believe they have this imaginary plan, but it's, it's not coming. It's just going to get worse. So, make a decision. Is this what you want forever, for all of us, for yourselves, for your own children? This is what you want them to deal with every day for the rest of their lives? This shot being marketed by media billionaires and politicians is not a vaccine by definition. You can go look this up for yourself on Pfizer's own website and Moderna's website. They refer to this as technology, a medical product, an app, and the software of life. This is RM, mRNA technology. It will permanently change your DNA forever. You will be able to pass this to your kids. This is a forever thing. This, you can't go back on that, and no one even knows what's going to happen six months from now, one year from now. Nobody knows. You want to keep track of stuff? Keep track of what's happening to all these people that are injecting themselves with this. We want to know. Are they in the emergency room? Are they dying from it? Because people are dying from this. Why can't the city post treatment and prevention options for COVID, like vitamin D? Or zinc? That's a whole lot better than all of us submitting to becoming government lab rats. Seeing family and friends is also crucially important to keeping good health, especially for older people. The only thing that is going to save us, to save this town, is to return to pre-2020 normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Brett Darby, and then Jennifer Darby after Brett. Thank you.
Howdy. Love the decor. It's great. I'm reading a statement on behalf of my mother-in-law, who can't make it today. "I bought a house here in June of 2020, moved here in July of 2020. Not but a week before we moved here, the city closed down. No restaurants, no shopping, except for the big box stores, no festivals, no celebrations, no parades. This continues to this day. Limited dining, limited shopping, being bullied daily, not wearing the correct mask, not wearing the mask correctly. Back up, you are standing too close. Why go out? Why shop for anything besides essentials?" And he, and then I hear that the mask mandate has been extended once again. I guess the bullying will continue for the next so-called 60 days, until, of course, is extended once again. "I'm sorry I moved here. I was better off in the larger city, more options. And families will stop coming here with no family activities available, no festivals, etc. Fredericksburg is heading down the road to being the next New Orleans, an adult drunken playground where everyone wears a mask, thanks to the liar mayor I unfortunately voted for." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer Darby, and then after would be Annette Bennett.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Darby. Sucks to be in y'all's position right now. Sucks to be in y'all's position right now. Um, I'm so proud. That's my husband, and he read my mother's statement. And she lived in Houston after escaping New York 40 years ago. My daughter's 21 years old this week, and she is part of Turning Point USA, and she tells me what all these kids say. She went to St. Edward's University, which I paid for, thanks, St. Edward's. And she only got two years in before the COVID. So, where are we at? These people don't want masks? These people have to say you want masks? Wink, wink, nod, nod, or yes, you should. But I just sat here and watched all y'all come in and fist bump and take off your mask and talk to people and shake hands or pat each other on the back. My son's 25. He doesn't have COVID. The woman he lives with, she does. She wears masks religiously. How's that work? I don't know. Magic? Maybe we're super people, super beings, and I had super children? Probably it's that. But the only real logic here is we need to make a decision. I understand you all are under a lot of pressure from higher-ups, but sometimes you've got to say, well, what, what are we going to do here? We need to make the decision. And the best way to do that is put it on the vote, put it on the ballot. Put it on the ballot. Put your money where your mouth is. Let the people speak. They voted for you to represent them. However, it's not working out. So, let's be adults and do the right thing. Because all the numbers in the world, all the statistics, don't matter a hill of beans if you've got a whole town behind you who hates you.
Thank you. Annette Bennett, and then we'll have, um, I'm sorry, I jumped. Hang on. Wait a minute. Yeah, we have Annette Bennett, and then Angela Smith. Yeah, you can hear me. I'll get closer. How's that?
Thank you all for letting me, uh, speak tonight. I wanted to say that in any war, you have to define victory. I would ask city council that in the war on a virus, how are we defining victory? And are you leading or are you following? First, it was seven days to flatten the curve. Then it morphed into this huge undertaking to vaccinate everyone, even though only those over 70 with 2.6 comorbidities are the most vulnerable. The survival rate for anyone under 70 is 99% with no treatment. So, kind of think about that just for a moment. 99%. Businesses were shut down because they weren't essential. Children were kept out of school. Families were disrupted. Those most vulnerable were isolated and deprived of social interaction. Unintended consequences may have taken a larger toll than COVID. And our economy has been devastated. More people are now dependent on the government than ever. Now, with COVID numbers decreasing, you might think, oh, great, all of our efforts are, and have caused this decrease, but not, not so fast. The WHO changed their testing procedures in January, which resulted in fewer false positives, which means a sharp decrease in the number of cases as well as deaths attributed to COVID. The same sharp decline happened simultaneously in the U.S. and other countries around the world. This is why it's important to question everything. In this war, I question, what are the metrics for having this live, open meeting? How was the decision made? On what basis? When it wasn't okay before? What are the metrics for lifting the mandates? And again, I ask, how do we define victory? And are you blindly following or are you being leaders? Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Smith, and then the next speaker would be Kenneth Selman. Angela?
Good evening. Members of the city council. As of today, it is apparent that Fredericksburg is being faced with a moral dilemma. We all know that we are not living in a state of emergency. To say that we are is called lying. Using medical data that is corrupt to impose directives on people to make decisions based on that data is called manipulation. Taking state and federal money when there is no emergency is called fraud. Weaponizing healthcare and destroying the doctor-patient relationship, that's called unethical. With all due respect, the council's actions are at the very least complicit with lying, fraudulent, unethical, manipulative behavior. As Robert stated earlier, there is a line in the sand, and you, council, are pushing us to draw it. Because you have taken the power given to you by the people. And you are using it in a morally reprehensible way.
Thank you. Kenneth? And then George, you want to speak to 7A, is that correct? George Studer? Okay, well, then you'll be after, uh, Kenneth. Thank you, George.
I, um, you know, previous speaker hit the nail on the head. The, the data that we see on the internet is truly false. We know, we've witnessed so many things through, even the state of Texas Department of Health, changes here, double-dip there, but if you just look at the trends, and all you can say is, but if you just look at the trends, we're trending today less activity than we were back in the summer. And that's based on 10 or 20-fold more, uh, testing. The, and the second thing, the masks do not work. The CDC knows they don't work, and that's why they're saying you need two or three masks. But I, I encourage you to go on the YouTube and look at somebody vaping with a mask like you have on. You see where that goes? Right out here and right up here. So, when we're walking down the street with all the tourists going into our stores, we're just passing by all that breath. So, these masks are worthless. They're wasting our time. The other thing that this does is the city website that was starting to finger-pointing in, uh, in real time so you could see. All this, all this mask does, requirement for mask, is it causes more finger-pointing. We get it at the stores, we get the stairs, because I'm not wearing a mask, just like many people here aren't either. The other thing about, if you are in comorbidity stages, you, there are... there are so many options with every one of our vendors in this city that if they're concerned about their health, they don't have to be in contact with people. But obviously, I'm not concerned about my health because I'm not wearing it. I've already had COVID, got over it. Lastly, just to close, I'd like to say that if you go back and look at the John Hopkins study that was just done about five or six months ago in early fall, they went back nine years and studied the total deaths for the United States, total deaths. And 2020 at that time was gonna trend less than any of the previous eight or nine years. Less. So like somebody else said, where'd the flu go? Where'd the cancer go? They're still out there, but all we're studying and all we're concerned about is COVID. And then if you absolutely just positively have to have some kind of compromise, get rid of the required and the mandated and go to encourage and recommended, like many, many cities 10 times the size we are. Sarasota did it, Sarasota County in Florida. So you can do this. Just tell the people, if you want to, you can. But don't mandate it. Thank you.
Thank you. George Studer, and then the next speaker would be Mary Studer.
Okay, George Studer from 1015 Avenue D. And at 1015 Avenue D, we had some great help from the city. They came by during the storm in the middle of the coldest part with all the ice and the toughest part, and cut down the trees that were laying on the power lines just really close to Jerry's house and mine. And since then, we've seen the city doing a great job picking things up, attacking the issues. We know that the water was a tough problem, and we really appreciate that. And the reason why I thought I should talk now versus later is because, you know, the way you attack a problem in an emergency is twofold. One is what do you do when it's really happening? And you get out there and you tackle it. Everyone did that. And afterwards, you look and say, lessons learned. What should we do to avoid this the next time? That should be part of the emergency management plan. You know, what are we gonna do this summer when power outages start happening because of the heat? How are we gonna cut down the, have enough people and equipment, which we don't have, I don't believe, to get all this stuff trimmed out so the next time there's a problem? Well, if you can attack it with that bravery in the middle of the storm and save lives, why can't we do that with the masks? Why can't we say, this is them tack, this is a storm on us as people, our kids? It's a real storm to me to talk to my son in San Diego, trying to see my grandkid. And I can't go see him. Because I'm not gonna meet all their qualifications for the two-year-old who has almost zero chance of getting hurt by this. But it's a mentality. We can't afford to put this mentality into our social structure. I mean, it's heartbreaking, you know? We have to figure out when we can go see my grandchild in San Diego, two years old, it's gonna be two years old. I can't go to his birthday party, you know, because I can't meet the kid's requirements for distancing. Anyway, I hope that you'll see that this is something that hurts the next generation, and we should attack it as if it was a real emergency. The emergency management plan should address how we get down to zero.
Thank you, George. Okay, after Mary would be Samantha Little. Thank you, Mary.
Mary Studer, it's a really great relief to be here in person. Three months ago, during our last opportunity to speak face-to-face, I reminded you of the oath of office that all of you have taken. There's no mention of caring for our health. There still isn't. There wasn't, there isn't. The emphasis is, and I quote, "preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution." And the First Amendment's already been mentioned. It has five freedoms. All of them have been infringed by the levels of government that are supposed to be protecting our rights. Our rights have been infringed by the government that's supposed to protect them. And you in the city have infringed on the, at least, on the right to peaceably assemble. For sure, all the time. Back in March, when I went to church and I found out it was closed, I just knew at that moment that the cure for this disease was worse than the disease. I knew that, and I still believe that. So, you're cautious about COVID, but you're not cautious about our rights. But you are cautious about making sure that the big government money keeps coming. And I've heard some of what you've said. One of you said, "I don't see us getting rid of the disaster declaration because of the financial, federal, and state support aspects of that." I don't see that that's going away until the federal and state support goes away. Don't see it going away? Don't choose to let it go away? One of you said, "If we get rid of it, then we lose the state and federal funding? And then we can't get it back?" I don't think we want to do that. Another one of you said, "Don't need to eliminate the disaster relief at all. Gotta be cautious with changes to the mask mandate." Don't need to rush to get out of it, out of being cautious. And then someone else said, "Stay where we're at." So every city council, the fire chief gives these COVID numbers. But is anybody assigned to calculate the effects of the COVID lockdowns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Samantha Little, and then Mary Lee Marshall would be next.
All right, so I just have some questions that I feel need to be answered. And I have this printed out so I can give it to you guys in case you don't want to go back and listen to this again. But since the beginning of COVID, how many businesses have gone out of business? How many businesses have had to apply for either a loan or government assistance just to be able to survive? What is the percentage of bars and restaurants compared to other businesses in Fredericksburg? And how have the restrictions affected prosperity in Fredericksburg? What is the percentage of employees lost due to the pandemic? What is the percentage of employee cuts that businesses have had to make? How many storefronts are now sitting vacant due to this pandemic? How many businesses are looking for help, employees? Has the city considered the fact that most employees are from out of town due to the high cost of living and unavailability of affordable housing? And since the closures and restrictions, employees have been taxed to their limits financially, making it even less profitable to work here? Since the city has received government assistance during and for this pandemic, how has the money been utilized? And how has it helped businesses that are affected? Has the city given tax breaks to its citizens that are affected directly by their policies? Does the emergency administration have and keep up with all local hospital data concerning COVID? And how many audits have been performed on medical facilities concerning their validity during the COVID? And I mentioned last time that on my billing statement from the hospital in Kerrville, I know that's in Kerrville, but that they had put me on a ventilator twice, and that wasn't true. And they also gave me an IV, that wasn't true. And I didn't have COVID, had nothing to do with that. So instead of numbers, can the city give us a breakdown in percentages concerning COVID stats? So that we can properly understand the effect? Are all of the city council members going to take the vaccine that they probably don't have much information on because they haven't done the correct research that they are recommending to the citizens? And why or why not? And will all city council members be able to keep this on an adult level? That means no sticking out their tongues, but now we cannot see that because of the mask? Is the city aware that the changes of death due to COVID are so rare that being so concerned as to put restrictions on its citizens can be considered paranoia rather than rational? And can I just say one more thing?
One, please, one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the city is super proud of Nimitz. And he fought in World War II, and so did my grandfather's. And what they were fighting was so much worse. And it's like we've just reversed society with this. It's just incredible, the fear, and it's all about money, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Lee Marshall, and then after would be Tom Marshall? Is that you again, Tom? Oh, okay, good, I thought you might have had twins. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go to Kathy Lux. And then the next speaker after Kathy would be Jeanette Hortmus.
Hi, thanks for having this open forum tonight. My name is Kathy Lux, and I've been a resident of Fredericksburg and Gillespie County for about 20 years, after retiring here from the great state of Alaska. I mention this because Alaska has totally canceled their state disaster declaration as it pertains to COVID. I am so proud of my heart home. I am from Texas, but we lived up there 31 years. And it was that spirit of independence that was so comparison to what Texas has that made it so wonderful to live there all those years. They canceled this declaration in spite of the fact that they are having a guaranteed decrease in revenues due to the current administration's ban on drilling in anore and other nationally-held lands throughout the state. I suggest that they would rather resume some semblance of normal life rather than continue to rely on direction from Washington DC or money from Washington DC. It's my opinion they did this because they have retained their strong sense of independence. Sadly, Texas is losing that independent spirit. People seem to want protection. I cannot believe all my friends that line up and are complaining because they can't get an appointment to get that mRNA vaccine. And I'm just shaking my head, I don't get it. The price for this protection is a loss of our God-given liberty to pursue our lives as we see fit. COVID is not an emergency. We just had a real emergency. A real emergency is coming home from Austin on Thursday. I will never forget it. Ice all over, it was a miracle I made it home. I go out and I'm gonna look out the window, and my husband says, "Don't look." Our beautiful oak trees are shattering. All the tops are broken off. And during the night, you can hear pole after pole down Gypson Mine Road in Cherry Mountain Loop bursting from the ice and worrying that the trees are gonna fall on our house. Not having water, not having heat, not having power for 18 days today. I still don't have it. Nobody came and knocked on my door, and I realized I live out in the county, and I didn't expect it. We've got a generator, we have wood, we are self-reliant. So that's good. But that is a real emergency. My sister had to break ice for her horses and sheep five times a day. I asked her how she was, she said, "The animals are doing better than I am." So it has been tough, tough, tough. That is a real emergency. And it's still an emergency as far as I'm concerned. And there are people still suffering. But it has an end in sight. This other doesn't.
Thank you. Then we have Jeanette, and then after Jeanette, we have Timothy Ellis Riley. Jeanette?
Good evening, I'm Jeanette, 206 East College Street. And I want to thank you for having me in person. And I want to thank everybody who has spoken. I mean, I'm in awe. I do not have a prepared speech because I had so much to say. I didn't know how to put it in, but you guys did it all. I do want to say, we are in a disaster. But the disaster is not this COVID emergency declaration. The disaster is what has happened because that's in place and because of the mask mandate. The disaster is what's happening in people's lives. It's what's happening to them psychologically, emotionally, economically, spiritually, relationally, yes, thank you. We are social beings. God created us with an incredible dignity. And one of the most important parts of who we are that defines who we are, besides our soul, but the expression of that is our face. And we're covering up the most important part. Little babies, when they look, they study their parents' reaction and face. That's how they learn how to interact. Little children, you watch them. Little babies, you see how they light up when they see your face, like marakini, you have grandkids. I know they light up when they see you. But it's because of your face, your smile. You watch kids, you go in a restaurant, they see your face, you smile, and everybody makes funny faces. The kids, and it's something inner, it's like your whole soul just comes to life. And we're shutting all that down, for what? And again, you've gotten all the stats. Everybody's giving you all the information, but this thing is a hoax. It is not an emergency. And those stats that they're giving from the hospital, I had a meeting, I talked to the emergency coordinator. And I am surprised that nobody's bothered to get any meaningful data. You have positive tests, you go, oh my gosh, we have all these cases. But how many of those people are testing positive that do not have any symptoms? That means they do not have the disease. Being tested positive does not mean it's a case. But who's monitoring that? How many people are showing up that have no symptoms, but they tested positive? I run across them all the time. So, in this, it's a hoax.
Thank you, Jeanette, appreciate it. Okay, Timothy Ellis Riley, and then after that would be Lisa Bellamy. I might be saying that incorrectly. Lisa, I apologize. Okay, Timothy?
You know, I obviously speak every week for those who do attend these regularly. And it ends up being the same subject. And a lot of it relies around this. That I'm left to do the dirty work. That we feel like we're left to do the dirty work. That's what it feels like. There's so many other illnesses I could get with having 24 other people speak before me up on this microphone. So there's so many other reasons to wear a mask right now and for us all to continue to take precaution. Where do I put that? And that's the unfortunate part about all of this. I'm very excited to be here. I live a life in the theater. I'm lucky enough to include myself in the Broadway community, which has been shut down for almost a year. The great news is that Broadway will open up in April. The great news is the rest of our country will open up in April. The great news is the rest of our country will open up in April. And by the time that this mandate at the end of the month is, you know, end of this month is over, you'll luckily be able to make a decision that will make these individuals and everyone happy. We all want to be here. But what I continue just to talk about, and for tonight, I, Mr. Musselman as a teacher continues to teach and model behavior by his choices, whether or not you believe in them or not. And I would, and I appreciate the modeling of our leaders. But we still need Zoom. And I don't, I support $50,000 or whatever, but I would also think that we've been doing Zoom meetings for a while. And it seems like we could pop some tripods up there and get your phones going, and it shouldn't cost $50,000. I support buying cameras, I think our city should have already invested in all these technologies. And I'm disappointed that this is the, that this is the base choice of where we're at. Very excited to be here, I support it. Yes, I I wear a mask as a symbol that I expect you to do. As our elected leaders, you're caught in a rock and a hard place. But there's nothing on this agenda that is actually dealing with issues beyond a COVID or an approval of a zoning. And I know, as I've continued in my 15 years of being a permanent resident in Fredericksburg, Texas, that there are so many other issues. And that is what I'll continue to go at. Please add Zoom for the next meeting so that a Mr. Musselman, so that the gentleman who read his mother's letter, so that these people, despite technology or any assumption that that's a limitation, it has to now be an option. And second, will you please work as a team and conquer the issues of affordable housing and waste management and how we actually communicate and educate our citizens to encourage them, maybe not mandate them to behave as adults? Thank you.
Lisa? Would you, when you come up, pronounce your, would you pronounce your name for me, please? And then after that is Jeff Burns?
I'm Lisa Bellamy.
Thank you.
So as I told you the last time we met, I recently moved here from San Francisco, California. And I moved here so I could live a life the way I want to live my life. And that involves waking up every day at 5:00 in the morning, going to the gym without a face mask. Can't do that in California. And then I like to come home because health is my priority. I maximize my life, I plan my day to maximize my health. Then I like to come home and eat things like egg whites and spinach. And and that's just the simple life I want to live. And I want to go to church on Sundays. And so that's why I'm in Fredericksburg, because those are things I couldn't do in California. I couldn't even walk through my neighborhood maskless. People would jump out of the way. Why would people do that? Because they were deceived by the propaganda that has been spewed at them relentlessly for months. People believe because you wear this mask and because you allow this mandate to exist, people believe they have faith in you that you are acting in their best interests to maximize their health. But that's not what the data shows. The man who spoke at the beginning of the meeting who gave a data presentation on COVID, I have to tell you, if you're basing policy decisions off of that dashboard, and that's a very generous term that I'm throwing at that presentation, that is a joke. He gave raw numbers. I I work in e-commerce, just so you guys know who I am. I come from Silicon Valley, I work for those big tech companies in e-commerce, and I deal with big, big data every day. And if I gave a presentation like that, I would be fired. He gave raw numbers with no context. You have to paint a story, you have to tell a story, paint a picture when you deliver data. You need to provide context, you need to tell me of the percentage of people, blah, blah, blah. None of that is apparent. I've I've looked and looked and looked all over your areas of your website where you're publicly reporting data, and I cannot find any data that tells me we're in an emergency. An emergency that was defined as caring for hospital utilization. I see no emergency.
Thank you. Jeff Burns. Jeff Burns, and then the next speaker would be Allison Henson. Jeff?
Wow, I haven't seen you all in person, this is awesome. Good to meet you all.
Glad you're here.
I'm Jeff Burns. Thank you all for having this meeting in public, in person, this is, this is great. Awesome to see everybody. Howdy. This is how it should have been the whole time, by the way. I call for an end to the local mask mandate and emergency declaration regarding COVID. It doesn't make sense, it is not scientific nor lawful. I won't go into those details, it won't matter to you all. Yeah, you all are following orders, you're just following the monkey, Governor Abbott, you're following Biden, monkey follow monkey. That's what's going on. And, you know, we'll vote you out in May, it doesn't matter. And by the way, yeah, that applies to the governor, we'll vote him out too. Don't think he'll get away with it. You all don't know what's best for us regarding COVID, our health. You don't know what's best for us, you can't possibly know. We, the people, elect you, then we tell you what's best for us, and your job is to act on that feedback. It's simple, and you don't, and if you don't listen, we replace you. I love representative republics, don't you? I get it, you may be trying your best, but it's not needed, nor in your job description. Thanks, but no thanks. We know what's best for us, we do. Your job is to provide city services to city citizens. Your job, the governor's job, the president's job, is not to protect our health, it's to follow the government instruction manual. Have you all read it? It's called the consultation? One final thing, a wise quote from the great President Ronald Reagan. The nine most terrifying words in the English language are, you all might know it, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Henson, and then the next speaker would be Kim Crowe. I think that's Crowe, so I may be wrong on that. Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Hi.
I am Allison Prane Henson. Mayor Keeney, the only reason you felt the need to read off a list of acceptable and unacceptable comments is because you all have established yourselves as petty dictators. I am unable to adhere to those guidelines as you deserve, deserve no respectful words and only the harshest condemnation. I will leave my comments here for you to read or rip up and throw away, I really don't give a damn which.
Thank you. I will read them. Kim? Would you pronounce your last name, please? Oh, it is Crowe, okay.
But I'm from Chicago, I'm not from here, so.
That's fine. Crowe's, no matter where they're from, they're good people.
Okay, so I have been in the health, I've been helping people in this community for 20 years through natural means, through acupuncture, nutrition, supplements. And so it's been, this whole thing has been very disturbing to me on so many levels because I know what really matters about health and what what we need to do. So it would make sense to me if you wanted to mandate against GMO foods, if you wanted to mandate against fluoride, if you wanted to mandate against aluminum in the air, if you wanted to mandate against hate, if you wanted to mandate against, just, there's so many other things. We have to breathe oxygen, we need sunlight, we need exercise. There's so many things that are important to our health, and we were not born with a mask on. And what disturbs me as well is that you making this mandate is, is again, like making people think that they're safe. And if they think they're safe, then they're gonna be lazy. They're gonna go buy their Twinkies and not do anything for their bodies because they think they're safe and they think they're protecting other people. And we know the science isn't there. So instead of going and exercising and doing the things that they need to do for their bodies, they're taking the lazy route of putting a mask on and and doing the same thing that they've always done, which doesn't do anything to help them and their immune system. There's, there's, again, it's all about money because there's zinc, vitamin C, vitamin D, there's all kinds of herbs you can take. But the problem is, they're cheap, they're really inexpensive. Why aren't, why don't we have places where you can just buy these things and give them, give them to all the people in all the the health facilities? Why don't they have that? I mean, so the other thing I want to talk about is the PCR test. So the PCR test, which I'm assuming, again, like the metrics, why, when, when is this gonna change? Like, we're going by these numbers. So does anybody know that the the PCR test was created by Carey Mullis? And the reason is that it was intended, the PCR was intended as a manufacturing technique so that you could replicate DNA sequences millions and billions of times. And it was never intended to be a diagnostic tool to detect viruses. Let me say that again. It is not appropriate to detect an acute viral infection, okay? So why are we using this test? Why are we having it free at the park every weekend? As long as we keep doing this, it's just gonna keep this thing going forever, forever. And it doesn't even make sense to me. If you don't have any symptoms, why are we testing for something if you have no symptoms? That doesn't even make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. So stop the madness.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, our last speaker is Clay, and I can't read your last name, so if you'll come up and give us that information, Clay. Well, if there's more than one Clay here, we're in trouble.
So, yeah, I'm Clay, I didn't have anything prepared, this is my first time I've ever done one of these council meetings, so. Quite interesting, I actually moved here from, I've been away from the States for a long time. And I lived in China for 13 years, and I was trying to get away from all this kind of stuff. So hopefully Fredericksburg would go in the right direction, so, I love it, so cheers.
Thank you. I just want to let Allison know that I'm gonna have this email to all of the council members so they have an opportunity to read it as well. Okay, we're gonna move on to other other action items, but I would like to take about a three minute recess just in case, I hope none of you leave, but if some of you all would like to leave, that would be a good time if you all would like to leave, that way we won't be interrupting the rest of the meeting. So I'll take a three minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to continue the meeting, if you all would take your seats.
George. Sit down. If you all want to talk, you all need to go outside then, please, if you're not gonna stay for the meeting.
Okay. I think we have some assemblies quiet. Thank, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to items in section six. I'm going to move B to the first one. B is consider the approval of the Health and Safety Plan approval for the Petronalis Creative Arts Alliance's 2021 Summer Concert Series. Jennifer?
Yes, good evening.
Oh, there you are. You're quick, thank you.
Jennifer Rupa, Special Events Coordinator. The Petronalis Creative Arts Alliance, or PCAA, has submitted a Health and Safety Plan for review and approval for their 2021 Concert Series. The Concert Series, as you know, has been going on for years and takes place at Market Plots. The concerts will begin in May and be on various Sunday dates through September. So if you would, turn to page 64 of your agenda packet. Graham Pearson and Debbie Ray with the PCAA have submitted a Health and Safety Plan, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that they're gonna follow for this year's concerts. They do plan to space the picnic tables at Market Plots six feet away and encourage people that are not in the same household to not sit together. They will require face coverings for those that cannot feasibly keep six feet of distance from someone in their own household. They will not have a dance floor this year, instead they will be encouraging people to dance to the music at their location where they sit for the concert. And since the concert, the music will play all throughout Market Plots, they will actually be able to sit under the large pavilion, Adels Ryan Halla, Oktoberfest Halla, and the grassy areas around the square. They also plan to post COVID health and safety protocols around the pavilion as well as make announcements through the band's PA system. And they do not serve food and beverages at this event, they encourage everyone to bring their own picnic baskets. So Debbie Ray is here tonight with the PCAA if you have any questions, but I think they did a great plan in putting this together, and so I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you. Tom, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Bobby?
No questions.
Jerry?
You're satisfied with the proposal?
Yes, very much so.
Polly?
No questions, the package looked complete.
Well, well written plan, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Health and Safety Plan for the Petronalis Creative Arts Alliance for the 2021 Summer Concert Series.
Move to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Bobby, second by Jerry. Roll call, please.
Mayor, do you still want to do roll calls?
Mayor, do you still want to do roll calls? It's, it's not required since.
Okay, we won't do a roll call then, thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? There is none? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have some fun, huh?
Okay, item six A, consider the approval of the conditional use permit per section five point four zero zero for the following uses. Condominium Residential and Townhouse Residential on a C one zone property located at ten thirty-two South Mylum, number Z dash two zero one nine. This was previously, previously discussed on the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, Jason?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, just to follow up from the results of that meeting. So I did attend along with the Windcrest Patio Homes Owner Association. Uh, I would say there's probably about twenty individuals there. Uh, the applicant was there. We went through, kinda went through legally what was required, what options were. We looked at the site plan. Uh, after some discussion, uh, I think the Patio Association was, was, uh, in favor of the townhome project in general. They just had some concerns regarding some of the parking that was, uh, north. If you look at your packet, it's the northwest corner. There's some, some parking that's right adjacent to, to those patio homes. Uh, the applicant did suggest or did state that he'd be willing to move those further down and/or relocate them off, off the site. Um, that seemed to satisfy those owners. Uh, from a staff perspective, you know, parking is where parking goes. We don't really get into the dictation on, on, as long as they're meeting their counts. That's our big concern. Uh, the other issue they had was regarding the vegetative strip or buffers between those parking areas in the homes. Um, so the applicant had said that he would install some more trees, um, to, to help kinda buffer and shield that area. I know that's kind of a vague, um, condition that they agreed to, but I think that's something staff can look through and we can kinda see, hey, how many trees are being removed? Can we get one tree every so many feet depending on type, species, those nature? So, um, at this point, I'll turn it over to y'all. If y'all have any questions for me, I know the applicant is available as well, so.
Thank you. Uh, Polly, questions?
No question. I read, I read the notes from the meeting and I'm satisfied that, that they given the homeowner association appropriate information and concluded it. So I'm okay now.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
No, I, I, I go over there and walked around over and there and, boy, it's gonna be a big improvement to what's there.
Bobby?
Uh, no, I think it's.
Good.
Good deal.
Uh, Tom?
Mayor, I, I've got some questions. Um, has there been any consideration to, uh, by the, by the applicant on why they named their, uh, street Crestwood Circle? And we have, already have another Crestwood in town. Uh, might be confusing to people, not that it's a real big deal. Um, a second, a, a second observation is that I, uh, I'm disappointed in the, uh, the applicant, uh, the way that they, they reached out or attempted to reach out to the homeowners. Um, I would, I would think that in the future, uh, it, that applicants that need, uh, they need to reach out to the people that are around them and do, do a better job than this applicant has done in, in trying to convey, uh, what they're trying to do. Because I think many times what applicants can do, they will avoid problems if they reach out to the people that, whose lives they are impacting. The, a second question I had of the applicant is, uh, in the plan, it shows detention pond. Uh, I guess that's in the southwest corner of the property that, uh, that is adjacent to the Allen Keller Company. And there was no, uh, uh, there's, there's nothing in there about how this, where this water's going to go and is it going to drain onto the, uh, onto the Allen Keller Company property? Or is it being, uh, is it going into, uh, texted right away? I know, I noticed that staff had, uh, had made some recommendations on trees, that they were not comfortable with the clear cutting of trees. I understand that this is a piece of property that is, um, challenging, to say the least, uh, in trying to put a condominium or a townhome project on it. I think that the, uh, their, their issues by the, the Windcre- the Windcrest people, um, they knew that this was a piece of property that was going to be, uh, that was going to be sold at some, at some point in the future. Uh, but I think the, the proper, the, the developer has a responsibility to them to, uh, to try to, to try to bring them into, or at least, uh, give them as much information as possible that this pro- how this, how this project is not going to adversely affect their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other remarks? Jason?
Uh, no, I just would like to clarify for Tom. Uh, I don't, I don't know the, the reasoning behind the street name change, but I do know that that, that process and that name change will actually be reviewed at a later date. So when they come through the actual subdivision plan itself, uh, that's when we look at those street names. We send that to, uh, Gillespie County nine one one. They verify for, for duplicates and things that sound similar. So there is an opportunity for us to, to address that, that those names are, are there, picked by the developer, but they may change depending on what nine one one says. Um, I think the applicants can speak more to the detention pond. Uh, and again, that'll be something that we see through the construction plans. I don't think they're, they have enough design at this point, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to them if you guys would like to come up.
Yeah, if you guys would like to address any of those or add any additional information, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And if you would, introduce yourselves.
I'm Dennis. Uh, just like I said, the record's straight as far as involving the residents at Windcrest. We've had two meetings at my office. Uh, the problem arose when evidently there was a regime change, uh, with the Patio Homeowners Association. And we did, uh, did not know that Marlene Pilot was the new president. Therefore, she did not get a phone call from us. Uh, we previously spoke to Jerry Smith, who, I believe that's his name, Jerry, uh, who was the previous president. He was at my office along with another gentleman. We've also talked to the, uh, townhome, uh, president. We got no grief from any of them, from Larry Wertz. Uh, everybody thought it was a great project. We didn't know there was a problem or else we would have reached out to him. So just to set that straight.
Thanks, Dennis.
Good evening. I'm Nick Taylor with Simple to Start Engineering, and it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you. Um, I'd like to speak to the detention pond, uh, comment and the outflow of it. Uh, the set of engineering plans that we have are not, not thoroughly engineered yet, but, uh, it did call out in the set of plans that we would be outfalling that detention pond into the, uh, the, uh, stormwater under, what is, what's the, what's the lower road? Uh, Keller Crossing.
Keller Cross.
Keller Crossing. So, uh, that is our plan is to, to use the, uh, stormwater that's provided there in Keller Crossing. There's a stub out there and that's, that is specifically the reason for the location of that detention pond as approved by the city in twenty seventeen, when, uh, when the greater property was, uh, was approved. Um, also the clear cutting of trees, maybe, do you wanna speak to that?
Sure.
Uh, we.
If you'd introduce yourself, please.
My name's P V McMinn Jr. I'm the developer of the project. And, uh, the comment that was made about clear cutting, I've never used that term. I never had any intention of clear cutting that property. That'd be completely insane for a developer to do that. So, so that's a non-point. Uh, we wanna maintain as many of the viable trees as we possibly can. I mean, any development is certainly enhanced with trees. So we have no intention of clear cutting the property. And as far as the name of our, uh, street, our, at, at the top of the hill, it's Wind. It's Crest View Circle. So I don't think there is a Crest View Circle in this, in this city as far as I know. Uh, so, uh, I think the gentleman assumed it was different. What did he say?
Crestwood.
Crestwood, it's, it's not Crestwood, it's Crest View. But that's beside the point. As, uh, the gentleman said, we, we might change some of those names. So we just want to know that we can develop our project, build townhomes, condominiums, and, and, uh, have the ability to make it a very, uh, high-end, attractive addition to the city of Fredericksburg. That's our objective. And, uh, thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
One, one last thing on that, that, that trees. Uh, you know, we're not asking for any variances as far as, uh, uh, what the, the city specifications are for the, for the tree removal or for, for replacing the trees. We, we want to abide by the city guidelines. Uh, and so, uh, we just wanna make sure that that's fair and clear is that, uh, uh, we're not, we're not asking for any variances. We wanna abide by what the city, city has in their specifications.
Trees are good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Okay, there is a recommendation on page four. Any further comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, this is Tom. I'm, I move that we approve as presented by city staff.
Oh, and I would like to, um, I know the, the meeting letters and went out prior to the, the packet, so I just wanna make sure that we include those conditions in the motion with the sidewalks, uh, moving those parking spaces and, and the, uh, uh, adding as many trees as possible in that buffer area so that we, we cover the Windcrest concerns.
So moved.
Okay, okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second by.
Jerry.
Jerry, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving right along, uh, we're gonna go to seven A, weather emergency update. Kent?
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, uh, just three items on the city manager's report this evening. Uh, first off, uh, give you an update on our, uh, response to the recent emergency, uh, weather conditions. And, uh, of course, our emergency response is now over. And so where we are right now is, of course, uh, very heavily involved in cleanup activities. Uh, we have our street department out and about, uh, working their way through the city to clean up all the trees and brush. Uh, reports from the last Friday were that they're about a third of the way through. So, uh, the residents can be patient. It'll be another couple of weeks before they make the complete run-through of all the streets, uh, in town. What they will do then is they'll come back and do a second run-through. So if you happen to miss, uh, bringing your items out, uh, like last week or this week, uh, they will be coming back and make at least two rounds of all the, uh, residential and commercial areas. So, so we got a lot of cleanup going on and that will continue. Uh, we have the disposal site set up in our landfill. If anybody wants to haul their own trees and brush, uh, they can certainly do that. It would really help us out. Uh, and there's no dumping charge if you wanna take them down at the side adjacent to our landfill. So cleanup is one of our primary activities going on right now. A second activity we have is repairs. We have continued repairs to city facilities going on. Uh, these were facilities that were damaged during the, the, the weather event. Uh, we have, uh, one of the, uh, big, um, uh, major buildings that were, were heavily damaged was what we called City Hall Annex. This is the building behind City Hall where we house our Parks Administration and our Health Division. And those people were flooded out completely because of a broken pipe. They have relocated over to the, the opposite end of the market plots where the police substation is. In that area there, we've moved those two offices. They'll be over there for at least several weeks, maybe more, uh, because, uh, it'll take a while to get in there. Not only fix the, uh, water leak, but the wall that's been damaged and so forth. But we do have a contractor, uh, that's, uh, going to start demolition. In fact, they were supposed to start today and then the repairs will start. So, uh, anyway, that, those offices have been relocated. We also are, uh, uh, we have reopened the golf course. Uh, Chris Mead and his staff responded real quickly to the, uh, broken pipes in the clubhouse. And, um, we've managed to clo- close off the gift shop area there and relocated our, our, uh, sign-ups and check-ins for golfing to the, uh, uh, Redbird Grill. So those are now, if you go in the clubhouse, you'll be routed to the, uh, grill area and you can, uh, sign up for golf and, uh, and, uh, so everything's back in full operation there except for the gift shop. And, uh, and very limited food, uh, because of the fact we, we, uh, have, you know, uh, moved our, uh, uh, offices into that area. Uh, restrooms have reopened in the, uh, clubhouse, so the golf course is in, back in operation. So great job by Chris Mead and his staff. Uh, we also, uh, are cleaning, continuing the, uh, repairs and cleanup in our city parks. Uh, the primary building that was damaged in our parks was Pioneer Pavilion. The, uh, restrooms there flooded out. Uh, however, we were able to get a plumber out there very quickly and, uh, those restrooms have been repaired and Pioneer Pavilion can, is now reopened. So, uh, we'll be having testing out there in the next couple of weeks and other activities. So, uh, we, we're able to put that back in service. And meantime, the other parks are being cleaned up. We have a couple of pumps damaged that are, uh, swimming pools and various other work that needs to be done at our parks. So, so that was a primary area of, uh, damage that we, uh, experienced. Uh, another, uh, area that we have going on right now is what we call kind of the review of the, uh, response that we made. Again, there's, in any sort of emergency response, there's no such thing as a perfect response. There's always things that you can look back on and say, uh, we need to improve in that area. So we're going back and evaluating everything that happened during that eight to ten days and, uh, determining where we can improve in terms of our response to future emergencies. And, uh, we'll issue an after-action report at the end of this process to not only say what we did right, but what we need to improve on in the future. Um, in one area, for example, we, uh, had a meeting today with the, uh, Jane Pope and the, uh, hospital staff, and we talked a lot about the situation where they almost lost water services at the hospital. And again, what we can improve on that to make sure we don't get in that situation again with regard to water services around the hospital. And, uh, we'll be coming back to the council probably in the budget sessions this summer to talk about, uh, water improvements around the hospital so that we can avoid those kind of, uh, uh, situations from happening in the future. So those are some things we're looking at now that we've had this experience that maybe we can improve on. Uh, we also had to, um, restart the emergency shelter last week. We closed it down for a while, but we continue to get some, uh, requests from re- residents of the county. And so we reopened the shelter for several days at the Baptist Church. And the shelter, uh, uh, we finally were able to place all those individuals in the shelter closed down Saturday, this last Saturday. So, uh, those, uh, the, that, uh, shelter was, again, a, a very, uh, new experience for us. Something we wanna look at, evaluate and see what we can improve on in the future. And then the last area I'll mention is working with our finance department staff. We're working on, uh, the reimbursements from the federal government. This was one of the, Gillespie County was one of the counties that was declared as a federal, uh, disaster area. And we're, so with that declaration, uh, by the president, we can apply for FEMA reimbursement. And so our finance department's gathering all the costs associated with our response and will be requesting reimbursement for, uh, some or all of that cost. So again, a lot of post-emergency response activities going on, so, uh, a lot of staff time being spent in these kind, in these areas. Are there any questions, uh, from the council on, uh, where we are as far as our, what I call, uh, our post-emergency response?
Polly?
Yeah, Kent, um, we were really fortunate to get those massive generators that Keller Company had. Or is part of your after-action, are we gonna look at, um, backup generation for like the wellfields and any major pumping stations that we have? You know, cause it may not be an ice storm, it may be bad weather that knocks things out and.
Sure, that, that will be one of the areas we'll see. Um, again, it's not a budgeted expense. It may be something we'll wait, bring to the council this summer when we start working on our budget for next year.
Yeah.
But it'll definitely be a, uh, tick, um, an item that we'll be, uh, pricing out and bringing back to the council.
Perfect, thank you.
Jerry?
No, I have nothing right now.
Bobby?
Not at this time.
Tom?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, second item, uh, that, last two items are very brief items. Uh, legislative update, again, not a whole lot of activity going on at the state legislature other than they have, uh, kinda refocused their attention to electric-related issues. And, uh, they had, uh, several hearings last week, Senate hearing and a, uh, hearing in the House on what can be done to, uh, protect our energy, uh, uh, availability of energy in the future. And so those discussions will continue. There, there may be a special session this year on, on electric-related issues. Uh, the P U C, uh, the chairman of P U C resigned this afternoon. Uh, there's a lot of things still going on, but, uh, so the legislature's really kinda, um, re, uh, focused on these kind of issues and there hadn't been a whole lot of other activity over the last couple of weeks. So, so that's all I have to report on that.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh, have, uh, our next meeting scheduled for this room on Wednesday morning. And this is, uh, for the, uh, benefit of the public tuned in. Uh, about once every three months, the city council has what's called a work session. And, uh, this is an opportunity for them to meet informally. They don't make any decisions at the work sessions. They talk about some. They talk about some important issues facing the city in the coming months or year. And so in this case, the council identified four issues that they want to talk about and again, give staff direction, but no decisions will be made at that meeting. So Wednesday at 8:30, we'll be here. And we have the four topics that we'll be talking about at the work session include hot funding for local organizations. We have, the council's allocated over $400,000 for local organizations that have special events and activities where they need city money to, to promote these events. And so, the county has started their allocation process. And before we start our allocation to these local organizations, we want to get input from the council on the applications and forms and the process that we want to use this year. So, so that is the first item on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting. And then the second item, we'll be talking to staff about the possibility of starting a comprehensive plan update this year. We have experienced some, some pretty significant growth over the last year or so. We permitted 100 new homes last year. A lot of people are wanting to move to Gillespie County. And so I think we had not planned to start the comprehensive plan this year, but with our new Development Services Director and the increased growth that we're experiencing, I think the council may want to move that up and try to add that to our budget. Our comprehensive plan is, you know, well over 10 years old and there's a lot of things that are no longer applicable, applicable in that plan. So, there is a need to update it and so the council will talk about that and whether we want to start that this year or wait till next year. A third item on the agenda is a discussion on our street improvement program. This is a, a follow-up to an engineering study that we completed last year through an engineer, an engineering company called Kimble Horn out of San Antonio. They came in and did a comprehensive analysis of our traffic conditions and they recommended some real, some smaller projects as well as four large projects. And so, the council will come back together and we'll give them an update on the smaller projects, talk about the larger projects and hopefully get some direction from the council on where they want to, how they want to proceed on some of these projects. So that will be an item that will be coordinated by Clinton Bailey and Garrett Vaughn from our Public Works Department. Jason Lutz, our Development Director, Development Service Director, will be presenting the comprehensive plan update information. And last but not least, the council wanted an opportunity to talk about the city manager's performance goals for this year. Those, again, will be discussed and then we'll come back at the March 15th meeting and we'll request council approval of those performance goals. And in the packet is the goals that were set last year as well as some of the, just a draft of some of the goals that the council has discussed for 2021. So, there'll be some discussion on that. So those are the four items, Mayor, Council, that we have on the agenda. Normally, our work sessions last about three, three to four hours. And so we'll be out of here probably by noon. So, again, it's a good opportunity to get council input on some important issues like, like I've described. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey.
Hey Charlie, this is Tom. I, I have one question for Kent. It has, has to do with, with, with power. I guess everybody has heard that the Brazos Valley Electric Co-op filed for bankruptcy today due to ERCOT, I guess ERCOT-related charges. So I think, Kent, what do we know about electric charges from, I guess, our two suppliers are LCRA and AEP? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Have we, have we heard anything about how the, the impact of this, this past week is going to happen to city of Fredericksburg electric customers' bills?
Yes, sir. We have talked to them several times since the disaster occurred and both of them have informally told us that will have very little to no impact on, on our taxpayers. However, we want exact information on that, Tom. We think it's very important that we not just have kind of an informal discussion. So Snyder Engineering, who represents us on a lot of electrical issues, is, is in conversations right now with both LCRA and AEP Energy. And they will have a detailed report that will be presented to the city staff and city council within the next several days. So, they are, again, analyzing, analyzing all this from an engineering standpoint and they have a lot, a lot of expertise in these areas. Not only are they doing it for Fredericksburg, but five or six other cities that they represent. So, we should all have all that information later on this week, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, agenda items for future agendas. Kent?
Yes, Mayor, Council, the next agenda is going to be quite a bit more lengthy than the one we have this evening. And we have a preliminary listing of agenda items on page 79 of your agenda packet and we have some items to add and delete from that list that I want to go over with you this evening. First off, if you'll turn to page 79, we have the normal council minutes. And then one of the major items, which is under ordinances and public hearings, in the first item under approval is a project at the intersection of Friendship and Eagle where they're requesting a zoning change, a change in land use. And also, they have a section of the property they're requesting to be annexed. This is a mixed-use development at the intersection there that will be coming before planning and zoning commission this week. And they'll have a recommendation, likely have a recommendation for the council at your March 15th meeting. So, number of items related to that project. We have, I think we still have the swimming pool pass coming forward under number two, under approvals. Number three and four, I just got word, we, we're going to be, we're not, the state's still not ready on that, so we're going to push items three and four on the early warning system back to the first meeting in April. We have the special event moratorium discussion and see if the council wants to extend that. We have, I think, still a bid award on the golf course bunker renovation and lighting project. Okay, that's coming forward to the council. The council agreed that you wanted to talk about the historic district guidelines and we'll have a report discussion on that. We have requests for proposals for the Hotel Conference Center, some, some discussion on that. And then two items that I got word, that we want to add. We want to add, again, approval of the city manager performance goals at that meeting. And we just got word that we think from the state that we are going to be awarded a grant for the pedestrian bridge that connects downtown to the Uper Street. This was originally proposed when the hotel was being built there and Ken Carr's project is, is there at the, at the quarter. And it looks like we're going to be able to get that grant and our local match will be provided by the contribution from the hotel. So, but before we accepted that grant, we wanted to bring that back to the council one more time to make sure that you're on board with that project. So, so that's where we are for the next agenda. And Mayor, we may want to look at pushing maybe one or two of these items back because I think the agenda's getting pretty loaded. And so, you and I and the council can have that discussion and see if there's anything we may want to push back to the first meeting in April.
So, Mayor, it might be good to push seven and eight to the following meeting. Those were ones that are big items, but they're not necessarily urgent.
Okay, I think seven is urgent, I believe.
It is now.
I think, I think the HRB and staff's looking for council direction on a couple of things. So Jason, is, is historic district guidelines, is that pretty important to have on the March 15th meeting? Or can that be delayed till April?
You know, I think it can, it can go to the next one if we need to. We've got plenty of stuff to work on. I don't want to push it too far back because we are kind of ready to roll out. It's also something that, you know, maybe it's not a, a council meeting, maybe it's some other format. We just have a couple of questions we'd like to get answered, so. If you need to move that one, feel free, but-
There's also no HRB meeting in between the 15th and the first, so there wouldn't be any, they, they wouldn't be able to do anything with the information between those two meetings.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking, we're going to be pretty worn out. So, I, I wouldn't want to give those two items short shrift because we're tired.
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
And then, so, so far the April 15th meeting's pretty live, so if we push a couple of things back, I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Council comments, I'll start with, since you're on that end, Polly?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to make a general comment. Number one, I really appreciate everybody showing up tonight. That was, you know, it's great that we're all back together, face to face. And, you know, 25 speakers, that was a long, that was a long customer comments session, but I think it was useful. But just for the general public to understand, our city is like a big business and it provides services to the citizens. And Kent is the president of that company. And you're looking at the board of directors and Charlie is the chairman of the board. Our job is oversight and direction. It's not our job to get down, bogged down in all the tactical details of how the city executes its services. So, I just want people to understand and appreciate what our role actually is and understand that we're here to give direction and we're here to provide oversight. And it is up to the city staff to execute on our direction. So if you've got questions about how it's being executed, please talk to the city staff about how things are being executed. If you have a question about direction or oversight, please seek out your city council members. We're all available. You can find us on our email addresses. You can find us around town. Reach out to us. You can do it individually. You don't have to wait for a city council meeting to talk to us. Thank you.
Karen? Thank you, Polly.
No, no comment, no.
Not tonight, thank you.
Tom?
I'd like to thank everybody for speaking this evening. It's been a, a long, a long year, but it's not over. Our, our positivity rate has started to creep up again. And I don't think now is, now is not the time for us to, to lessen our guard. I think that we are in a situation where we can, we actually see, we might be seeing light at the end of the tunnel and that light is not necessarily the headlight of a train. It could be the, the, the end, the backside of the tunnel. So, we just need to keep moving forward as a community and I appreciate everything that everyone in our community has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now, I, I also want to say, I'm a very strong proponent of having public input and having you folks here and, and I welcome you and I apologize for not welcoming you at the beginning of the meeting because I do enjoy your comments and opinions on, on what you had to say this evening. I know I was one that really wanted this to happen sooner, but under circumstances it didn't, so. And I'm sure our council and our staff are very appreciative of the public because that's why we're here. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Having a motion by Bobby?
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all, be safe, have a good evening. Good job.